The Board of County Commissioners meeting. It's May 17th. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Kerner.
Here.
Commissioner Moreno.
Here.
Commissioner McKinley.
Commissioner Sacks.
Here.
Mayor Weinroth.
Here.
Vice Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, Vice Weiss, would you please do the invocation, pledge of allegiance? Everybody, please rise.
We ask you to bless this meeting of people who earnestly desire to do their work in the best possible way, to benefit those we serve, and to leave our children a better world. Please give us the wisdom and vision to plan adequately and act correctly to achieve these ends. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you very much for those words. Madam Administrator, do we have any additions, deletions, or substitutions?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the board, we do not have any additions, substitutions, or deletions.
Nothing.
Nothing.
All right. Well, we do probably have a little addition, maybe a special presentation, but we'll address that when we get to it.
Yes, sir.
May I have a motion?
And I'd like to thank staff for not having those additions, deletions, and substitutions.
We do compliment you on not having additions and deletions. I'll take a motion to adopt. I have a motion by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Kerner. All in favor? All opposed? Show that is approved. Six to zero. We are now going to move on to our consent agenda. I'm looking to see if anybody here would like to pull anything. Seeing nothing, do we have any cards, Commissioner Kerner, from the audience?
No, ma'am.
Okay, then I'm looking for a motion to approve. I got a motion from Commissioner, Vice Mayor Weiss. Commissioner Kerner, seconds. All in favor? All opposed? We have a unanimous six to zero vote to approve the consent agenda. That moves us right along. All right. We are now moving to public hearings, and this is item on your agenda 4A1. This is going to be a quasi-judicial item, so anybody who would like to speak on 4A1, and I do have one speaker card, I'm going to ask you to rise so you can be sworn in.
All those who wish to testify on this item as a public speaker or staff, please rise and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, we'll take a presentation from staff on item 4A1.
Thank you, Mayor, Board of Commissioners. This is a utilities abandonment. And so the site location, as you can see on the drawing, is an area that the request is asking to be abandoned for, so they can do some improvements. And so we looked at in terms of all the utility stakeholders and no one-
Excuse me, I'm going to interrupt you for a moment. I need a motion to receive and file the proof of publication.
So moved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Moreno, seconded by the Vice Mayor. All in favor? All opposed? That's been approved, six to zero. Sorry for the interruption.
All right. So staff has checked with all the utility stakeholders, and no one has an issue with this abandonment, and so our recommendation is to proceed with this abandonment. Yes, sir. That's it.
Okay.
The motion we approve.
All right, well, let me take the public comment on this first, and then we'll take the motion.
All right. Mr. Mayor, on this item, we have Adam Abakasi.
Sir, you have three minutes. Please identify yourself for the record.
My name is Adam Abakasis. I'm the attorney representing the property owner, Mr. Croati. I don't have any comment. I just have an affidavit of the installation of the required sign at the property before the hearing that I wanted to give to the record or give to the-
Okay. Would you hand it to our clerk, please?
All right. I'm now going to take a motion to approve the item 4A1. I have a motion by Commissioner Moreno. I have a second by Vice Mayor. Seeing no further discussion of this item, all in favor? All opposed? Show that as being approved, six to zero. Thank you. We're now on to item 4A2. Do I have any need for a presentation? Do I have a motion? I have a motion by Commissioner Sacks. I have a second by the Vice Mayor. This is for the abandonment of a site that's located south of Palm Meadow Road on the west side of State Road 7 in District 5. All in favor? All opposed? That's been approved, six to zero. We're now going to move on to item 4A3. This is, again, engineering and public works. Do I need a presentation? Do I have a motion? I have a motion by Commissioner Sacks. I have a second by the Vice Mayor. This is the abandonment of a site that's located within municipality of North Palm Beach on the west side of the Prosperity Farms Road, south of Alamanda Drive in District 1. All in favor? All opposed? That's been approved, six to zero. Okay. We now move on to public hearings, and we're on, wait a minute. Nope. Have to turn the page. Moving so quickly here. Okay, we're on 4C1. This is Commission on Ethics.
4B1.
4B1? I'm trying to go too quickly.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 4B1, A, B, and C, and state that the bonds will not constitute a debt, liability, obligation, or pledge of the faith and credit or taxing power of the county, or the state of Florida, or any political subdivision thereof, but shall be payable solely from the revenues of and proceeds pledged by the bar.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernard, and that's in District 7. I have a second by the Vice Mayor. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor? All opposed? That has been approved, six to zero.
Do you have a public hearing on this, Commissioner?
Go to the microphone, please.
This requires a public hearing, so you have to open the hearing first, receive any comments, and then you can close the hearing and then continue with the resolution.
Right. I don't think I have comments, but we will open the hearing. Anybody have any comments? Seeing no one having any comments, I will close the public hearing. Again, I will take that vote we just had as being on the record, six to zero, in favor. Thank you. All right. Everybody's happy. We're now going to move back on to 4C1. 4C1, Commission on Ethics. Anybody need a presentation on this? No. Do I hear a motion on this? I have a motion by the Vice Mayor. Do I have a second? I'm looking for a second, going once, going twice. Commissioner Moreno. All in favor? All opposed? Show this as 4C1 being approved, six to zero. Thank you for coming. Okay, we're moving right along here. We're going to move on, and we're going to skip this item until we have our guest, special guest arrives, so we'll move now on to 5B1. This is Environmental Resource Management. Do we need a presentation? Do we have a motion? I have a motion by Commissioner Sacks, seconded by Commissioner Kerner. All in favor? All opposed? I'm going to take a motion to reorder the agenda in the face of the fact that we're going to put 5A1 later at a, we'll deal with it when we get to it. All right. I have a motion by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Moreno. All in favor? All opposed? Six to zero. Let's go back to the vote on 5B1. I have a vote, I have a motion by Commissioner Marine, Sacks, seconded by Commissioner Kerner. All in favor? Yes, Commissioner Moreno. You wanted to have something? Just turn your microphone on.
Yes, since it's been a while, I think we should have a brief presentation.
Oh, Deborah Drum, we are going to let you do your presentation.
I brought somebody much better to give this presentation.
All right. And here, I thought we'd be out of here before 10 o'clock.
Hi, good morning. Deborah Drum, Department Director for ERM. I brought Allison Spall here with me today to give a short presentation. She's a senior environmental analyst who oversees all management plan updates for ERM, so thank you.
And our District 1 Commissioner appreciates that.
All right. I will try to make this short and sweet for you guys, like I did last time. We are here for the update for the Hungry Land Slough Natural Area Management Plan. The Hungry Land Slough Natural Area is located in the northern portion of Palm Beach County between Beeline Highway and North Lake Boulevard. The natural area is 3,047 acres. Natural area acquisition occurred between 1996 and 2016, and included three major tracts along with a few smaller parcels. The changes that have occurred since the last update include the following. Vegetation communities have changed as exotics were removed and restoration activities completed. Communities transitioned from disturbed to higher quality. Management units were combined to make prescribed burning easier. Several restoration projects were completed between 2002 and 2007 to raise water levels on the site. And public use facilities were added to the site, which included a three-car parking lot with a bike rack, 8.1 miles of hiking trail, and 3.4 miles of multi-use trails. And that is the summary of this update.
We're happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Moreno, do you have any questions?
No, I just wanted to share.
Okay. Well, we're happy to share. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Why is it called Hungry Land?
That one, I don't even know.
We weren't ready for that question.
There's no changing, there's no Candy Land.
Can we change the name?
I think that it is also something that the state recognizes. It's a state name as well for their Hungry Land Slough, because they have state-owned property, but I will get you the history of why it is called that.
Thank you.
I'm sure there's a good reason.
Okay.
You have some averting to being hungry? I'm sure there must be some very specific reason, and we will learn about that in the future.
We are the agricultural capital.
All right. Well, then we shouldn't be hungry. All right. I see no more discussion on this item. I'm looking for a motion, Commissioner Moreno. I have a motion by Commissioner Moreno, seconded by Vice Mayor Weiss, with his comment noted. All in favor? All opposed? Show that as being approved, six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
I know. You just want to help so that Mr. Anthony has time to get here.
All right. We're going to move on to 5C1, which are several pieces of property that are being deeded back to the cities of West Palm Beach and Belle Glade, South Bay, and the city of Pahokee. If there's no need for a presentation, I'm going to look for a motion. I have a motion by Commissioner Sacks. I have a second by the Vice Mayor. All in favor of 5C1, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, N, H?
Yes.
Opposed? It is approved, six to zero. Thank you, everybody. It's Sami. It's always great to see you. All right. We're moving on to item 5C1. Oh, wait a minute, that was a continuation of what we just did. All right, good. That was just the summary, which was very long. Okay.
Before we move on?
Yes.
I got a note, and it says, "The Army cut off and destroyed the food supplies to the Seminoles in the mid-1800s, leading local ranchers to refer to the region as Hungry Land. The slough still runs through the area, was called the Hungry Land Slough, and was primarily used for grazing cattle." This is from the Fish and Wildlife, the FWC site. There you go. Deb, we just saved you some time.
All right. Are you satisfied? Do you want us to change the name?
Maybe.
Maybe. All right. We'll have a discussion on that later.
We'll workshop or something.
We'll workshop that. All right. 5C2, Facilities Development and Operations. We have a staff recommendation to approve a developer agreement, second restated sports facility agreement, et cetera. I'm assuming that we're going to want to have at least some discussion on this, since it's a large item, so why don't we take a presentation?
Good morning, and I'm going to try to keep it as short and simple, as sure as possible, but there is certainly a whole lot of information. Good morning, my Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. It's Sami Adella, Director of Facilities Development and Operations. Joining me today is Mike Jones, Chief Assistant County Attorney, Glenn Jurgensen, Executive Director of the Tourist Development Council, and George Lindley, Executive Director of the County's Sports Commission. The item that you will be considering today provides for the renovation of the Roger Dean Chevrolet Stadium. As you may recall, back in December of 2019, the Board approved an updated term sheet to facilitate the renovation of the Roger Dean, and authorized county staff to initiate negotiations of a new developer agreement and a restated sports facility use agreement. Staff proceeded as authorized, to the point that the agreements were almost final, and then COVID hit, and our bed tax collections dwindled. Then we had to stop negotiations in March 2020. Until November 2021, when TDC's executive director confirmed that the agency's financial condition will allow for the renovation project to move forward, and as a result, negotiations were reinitiated. The term sheet approved back in December of 2019 provided for a project cost of $108 million, which, under certain circumstances and added teams' requests, could be increased to $126 million. The project will be paid through county revenue bonds to be issued as a mix of taxable and tax exempt. Depth service was to be met by a county contribution capped at $75.1 million, coming from the first and fourth sent bed tax proceeds, a state contribution capped at $50 million under Floria Statute 2288.111, and a use fee to be paid by the teams, and which will be equivalent to the difference of the depth service minus the aggregated value of the state and county contributions. Although the final value of the annual use fee will not be known with certainty until the date of sale of bonds in December 2019, assuming a 3.98% interest rate, it was estimated to be roughly $44 million. The term sheet also provided that the teams will front-load their contributions during years 1 through 9, with the county contributing only $150,000 per year, allowing it to phase out other TDC obligations while keeping TDC reserves above 10%. The renovation project is aimed towards improving the visitor experience by pursuing public share and private use improvements. Roger Dean is a 25-years-old facility. The renovation project aims towards positioning it at a comparable level with its counterparts for years to come. With a brief, with that brief historic overview behind us, please allow me to provide you an overview of the key material terms of both agreements. Attachment number 8 to the agenda item includes some more detailed material terms summary. Let us first discuss the new developer agreement. If approved by the Board, the new developer agreement will be entered between Jupiter Stadium Limited, JSL, a partnership between the Marlins and the Cardinals and the county. JSL will serve as the development consultant and project manager for the renovation project, and in such capacity will coordinate and administer all aspects of the design, permitting, construction, development, and delivery of the project. The developer agreement provides for the issuance of county revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed $108 million, which can be increased under certain circumstances and at the team's request to $126 million. Bonds will be taxable and tax exempt, and depth service payments will be met through the aggregate of state and county contributions plus a use fee to be paid by the teams. State funding under the developer agreement is suspected to amount to $50 million, as per the certification process previously described. Per the developer agreement, two conditions precedent must be met prior to sale of county bonds, the developer agreement must be executed, and the state funding agreement, providing for 25 annual payments of $2 million each, must be in place. Both conditions precedents must be met by April 30, 2024. Under the development, developer agreement, JSL will be responsible for all cost overruns unless caused by the county. Any construction savings accumulated at the end of the renovation project will be deposited into renewal replacement reserve account. The agreement has typical default conditions. If JSL were to file for bankruptcy or go bankrupt, if JSL failed to pay its subcontractors, or if it were to fail to perform any material obligation, it will be considered to be in default. Similarly, if the county failed to pay JSL or failed to perform any of its material obligations, it will be considered to be in default. As it relates to term and termination, the agreement will terminate the earlier of full completion payment of all services under the agreement, the day of any termination of the restated use agreement, and the day, or the day of the termination of the developer agreement itself. JSL can terminate the agreement for any reason prior to the sale of county bonds, subject to repayment of 100% of any state annual contribution payments received, and the reimbursement of eligible costs reimbursed by the county, or if the conditions precedent are not met by April 30, 2024. The county can terminate the agreement for any reason prior to the approval of the county bond resolution by the county, or if the county has not received the bond sale request by April 30, 2024, or if the conditions precedent are not met or waived by April 30, 2024. If the developer agreement is terminated, the restated use agreement will terminate simultaneously. There are two material differences between this new developer agreement for Roger Dean and the developer agreement that the county enter into for the construction of the ballpark of the Palm Beaches. First, different from the ballpark, JSL will be required to bid out the project with at least 90% completed construction drawings, which should assist in minimizing change orders and similar requests. Second, the agreement provides for a close-out process to be completed before the county authorizes final payment. This completes our overview of the new developer agreement. Let us then transition to an overview of the material terms of the restated sports facility use agreement, which will be entered into by the county JSL, the Cardinals, and the Marlins. The original sports facility use agreement was executed in 1996, was restated in 2011, and as a result, its term is slated to end in 2027. The restated use agreement will extend the term to 2049. Under the restated use agreement, the county will grant JSL the exclusive right to use, occupy, operate, and permit the facility for all lawful purposes, the primary purpose being serving as a professional sports training facility. JSL will cause the teams, and the teams agree to play, all their respective Major League Spring Training home games at Roger Dean during the spring training season each year. Under the use agreement, JSL will be responsible for managing and scheduling all events. TDC and JSL will meet annually to coordinate next year event calendar, and there will be a priority order for the rights to use the stadium. Aside from the agreed-upon event calendar, the county will have the right to request scheduling of a tourism enhancement event at any time with a 60-days' notice. JSL will be required to develop a standard form event license agreement for tourism enhancement and community events, which will include a standard fee structure. JSL will have the right to negotiate, approve, and execute a new license agreement with the town of Jupiter, and that will be subject to the county's consent. As previously stated, JSL will be required to pay an annual fee to be calculated following the sale of county bonds, and which will equal the annual depth service minus the county state contributions. JSL will be responsible for all repair and maintenance, and for implementation of the renewal replacement project schedule. JSL will be entitled to receive and retain all revenue streams, and will control all naming rights. As it relates to tourist promotion, the county logo will be placed in a visible location in the stadium, and the county seal and tourism identity are to be included in all county marketing efforts. The team will be required to spend a minimum of $500,000 annual, per year, of marketing and promotional services in their respective home cities, and that amount will increase 10% every five years. Default conditions under the agreement are fairly standard. If JSL were to file a petition for voluntary bankruptcy, if it failed to perform any material obligation under the agreement, or if it failed to meet any payment obligation, will be considered to be in default. For the county, if it were to fail in the performance of any material obligation, will be considered to be in default. The use agreement also provides a framework for what will occur if one or both teams were to relocate from the stadium. JSL will not be obligated to perform the agreement in event that a national emergency or the United States is under. A state of war or operation of law prevents it from using the facility for all or part of an entire full spring training season in any of the years covered under the term of the agreement. If such were the case, there will be an automatic extension for an amount of time equal to the duration of such suspension. Similarly, JSL nor the county will be in default or breach of the use agreement to the extent that it is unable to perform due to an event of force majeure. As it relates to a labor dispute scenario, that is lockout, strike, or any other labor dispute involving Major League Baseball, JSL will be obligated to continue to provide repair, maintenance, renewal and replacement, and capital improvements to the facility, but will be allowed to scale down operations. There will be an automatic extension to the agreement term if the labor dispute prevents JSL from using the facility for full spring training season. Payment of the annual fee will not be suspended under suspicion of planned labor dispute nor force majeure scenarios. The only instance where it will be excluded, JSL will be excused from paying its annual fee, if, will be, if for any given year, the county is excused of paying its annual depth service, an unlikely scenario other than under very serious conditions. Similar to the use agreement with HW for the ballpark of the Palm Beaches, the restated use agreement contains a more favorable term clause. Under the restated use agreement, the teams will guarantee full and unconditional performance of the JSL obligations. There are some differences between the current facility agreement and the restated use agreement that we would like to highlight. First, the current use agreement, under the current use agreement, JSL contributes $250,000 towards renewal replacement, and the county covers the rest. Under the restated use agreement, after completion of the renovation project, JSL and the county will jointly develop a renewal replacement project schedule under which JSL will cover the costs of private areas, and we will cover the costs of public improvements. This framework is very similar to the one we have under the agreement with the ballpark. Second, under the current agreement, we do not have an annual use fee. The restated use agreement provides for an annual use fee, which will be equivalent to the annual depth service minus the aggregate amount of the state and county contributions. The marketing contribution is similar to the one we have with the ballpark. The difference is that this one will increase 10% every five years. As I stated at the beginning of this presentation, negotiations were done per the approved term sheet. For the most part, county staff has brought back agreements that align with said term sheet. There are, however, some deviations that I would like to highlight. Per the approved term sheet, the term of the agreement was supposed to be April 30, 2048, and the deadline for requesting sale of county bonds was supposed to be April 30, 2022. Well, we were on hold basically 18 months due to COVID, so you will see that the term we are recommending is April 30, 2049, and April 30, 2024, for the sale of county bonds. At the time of approval of the term sheet, that was a condition that provided that JSL was to take the lead in negotiating the funding agreement with the town of Jupiter, aimed towards addressing the parking challenges related to the operation of Roger Dean. The condition for the provided that JSL could terminate its agreements with the county if the Jupiter funding agreement were not to materialize. After giving said condition thorough consideration, this Board directed staff to include a similar contingency for the county, that is, that the county could terminate the agreements if the funding agreement were not to materialize. As of this meeting, we continue to work with the town of Jupiter on that funding agreement. That funding agreement has not been executed. However, you will see that the agreements we're bringing forward today to the Board are still being recommended for approval regardless of that funding agreement. In fact, last Thursday, Town Council held a workshop meeting to discuss the Roger Dean project and related agreements. County staff was invited to participate, and at the end of the workshop, Town Council directed town staff to work with county staff and the teams towards drafting a mutually agreeable funding agreement. Therefore, we remain hopeful that the conversations that will ensue in the weeks to come will eventually lead to the approval of that Jupiter funding agreement, and that if materializes, it may include other capital improvements other than parking. Just to give you an overview of what the last draft of that agreement included, and it's just a draft because it has not been executed, it provided a 3.3 capital contribution towards construction of the bedding tunnels and an annual contribution of $250,000 per 10 years, which could be used for other capital improvements. As stated before, we continue to work with the town of Jupiter, and that may vary. The agreements being recommended to the Board today do not include that contingency for termination of the Jupiter funding agreement were to materialize. I may say that certainly we're bringing the agreements back today because there is an urgency to move the project forward, and given financial and market conditions, we believe, just like the teams, that the renovation project should proceed. We have related to this renovation project as well, a Jupiter funding agreement, as I covered those agreement that relates to town, that was- I covered those agreement that relates to town, that was executed in 1997 with the county's consent. Under said agreement, the county and JSL provide the town access to four string playing fields, my apologies. 10 months out of the year, the town pays a security fee of $25,000, which has not increased since 1997, and an annual maintenance fee of approximately $70,000, which is certainly a unique offering for the town. Under the new sports use facility agreement, JSL will be authorized to issue a new license with the town, subject to the county's consent. In determining if to approve these agreements, there are some special considerations that we would like to bring to your attention. The financial framework for the renovation of the project assumes that the county will be certified by the state to receive $50 million of incentive funding. In an effort to expedite the certification process, county staff prepared the application and provided the draft to the Florida Sports Foundation. Comments were received and incorporated into the application, which is included as attachment nine to the agenda item. We hope that said preparatory step will provide for faster review process by the state agency. County staff briefed the TDC board in November 2021 to advise them that negotiations had been reinitiated, and in April 2022, to provide them an overview of the agreements that will be recommended to this board. County staff also provided a courtesy copy of the use agreement to HW, as under its agreement with the county, it has a right to review it for most favorable terms. As of today, we have not received any comments. That said, once the agreements are executed, if they're executed, they will have 21 days to review and issue any comments as they may deem appropriate. Under the county's agreements, the county, under the recommended agreements, the county's ability to terminate for any reason will be limited from the date of approval of the bond's resolution to April 30, 2024. If the board approves the agreements, JSL will proceed with the sign and prayer meeting which it expects to complete by December 2022. The first phase of construction will commence after spring training 2023, and the second phase after spring training 2024. In preparation for this item, JSL provided updated cost estimates, which are based on schematic drawings and taken into consideration current market conditions. Those schematic drawings were not available back in December 29, when the term sheet was approved. We have reviewed the same and find them to be fair and reasonable. That said, construction market is evolving every single day, as we know. Final cost will not be known until bids are received. JSL carries the cost and the risk for any cost overruns, and will be responsible for the same. The revised estimates provide for a total project cost of approximately $1.7.3 million. This slide provides basically a visual representation of the scope of work under the renovation project. When the term sheet was approved in 2019, the project was slated to be a fast-paced one, as you may recall. Hence, the teams proceeded with retaining the sign services. And as of today, the teams have incurred in about $2.5 million of preliminary expenses, which are permitted under federal treasury regulations, and expect to incur in approximately $4.5 million of legible expenses prior issuance of the bonds. As such, county staff is requesting approval of a budget transfer from TDC reserves to cover said preliminary expenses. The TDC reserves will be reimbursed once the bonds are issued. If the board were to approve the agreements, JSL stands ready to move forward with the project as expeditiously as possible, as the design consultant and the construction manager have been selected in accordance with county procedures. As we all know, the financial market continues to evolve daily. Working with our colleagues from the Office of Financial Management and Budget, county staff updated the financial terms under the current conditions. As of May 2, a revenue bond of $108 million at a 4.34 interest rate with an exempt taxable ratio of 32.3 and 67.7 will lead to a use fee of approximately $53 million, with county contributions cap at 75.1 million and state contributions cap at 50 million. At the end, at the time of approval of the term sheet back in December 2019, this board thoroughly considered TDC's ability to absorb the county's contribution towards debt service. It also considered the value that spring training brings to the county's economy. Therefore, I will leave you with my colleagues Glenn and George, who are certainly more better positioned to discuss said topics.
Thank you, Izamay, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Ms. Baker. Just to give you an update, certainly, we are in a better condition right now than we were in November 2019. And even when we pulled the trigger back in this past November to say that we could make this investment and start on, I reported to the TDC last Thursday that we are right now at about 33% to 35% ahead of our bed tax projections for 2022. So we pulled the trigger back in November when we were at a forecast of about 18. So we're in a very good position in terms of our reserves. Our reserves right now in that first and fourth cent, we will basically have reserves equal to each year's revenue coming in in '23 and '24. So that's a great position to be in for that first and fourth cent. So with that, certainly, the lapsing schedules that we did were totally covered in terms of our other debt services that we have responsibility for, and all of our repair and refurbishment that we do for all the tourism assets, and those are the convention center, convention center garage, ballpark at the Palm Beaches, and then certainly Roger Dean. So this is all about economic impact. It's all about economic impact force, and that's why I brought my colleague George Lindley with me. You know, spring training brings in, pre-COVID, about $70 million a year in economic impact. Now, we had a tough couple of years. Certainly, we lost about 25% of 2020. We're almost through. We had one more week left of spring training. We went down to about $54 million. And then we had the capacity constraints of 2021, so we went down to about $34 million of economic impact. And then we thought this would be the year and the lockout. So I think we're still going to have a strong 2022 spring training economic number, and certainly George is going to go through and have an update on that for us and a study done. But it is all about spring training, but it's also all about what we do with this stadium in the offseason. And that's why I've asked my colleague George Lindley from the Sports Commission to give us an update on those other things that we do at both stadiums, but specifically Roger Dean. George?
Thank you, Glenn. And thank you to the Board of County Commissioners and to Verdinia.
Is it on?
There we go. Sorry. Now, thank you to the Board of County Commissioners and to Verdinia for helping the TDC and our Sports Commission in creating really a dynamic sports tourism infrastructure and one of the, not only one of the top sports destinations in the state of Florida, but throughout the United States. And Major League Baseball spring training is a big part of that. And as Glenn said, the spring training facilities that exist in this county, it's not solely about Major League Baseball. There is year-round usage. There's no doubt that we are the spring training capital of Florida. One out of every five games thereabouts take place. When I say one out of every five games, one out of every five spring training games are taking place right here in Palm Beach County. There is no other destination in the United States that can compete with that type of volume, and we're very fortunate to have great partners. At Roger Dean Stadium, we have our hometown heroes, the Miami Marlins, and then the St. Louis Cardinals, which is truly one of the most avid and loyal fan bases that you'll find, not only in baseball, but in all of sport. The, in terms of year-round usage, having two facilities that work together provides two stadiums and 26 diamonds, and that's really an unrivaled position that we, that exists in this state in terms of hosting some of the nation's largest baseball tournaments, showcases, and similar events. And to give you an example, looking for over just a year span from last spring training, from February of last year to the end of January this year, so 2021, in addition to spring training baseball and the minor league baseball that has taken place at Roger Dean Stadium, and our Sports Commission was involved in hosting nine amateur baseball events, tournaments, and showcases, some of the nation's largest amateur baseball properties. Those nine events that occupied Roger Dean Stadium generated over 28,982 room nights, so almost 29,000 room nights, overnight accommodations. That actually outpaced what even spring training created, earmarked solely at Roger Dean, not looking at the both facilities, which was around 19,000 room nights, and it projected economic impact of over $20 million. So I wanted to bring that up because it is not just about spring training, although we are, again, we are one of the greatest spring training destinations you'll find in this country, and it is a huge economic driver, but there is year-round usage. And it's important, as Glenn mentioned, to note that we have been compromised due to the COVID-19 pandemic over the last couple of years. Over this last year, we've seen an increase. We are coming back to regain some normalcy, but those numbers do fall short of pre-pandemic levels, and we expect this year to be even stronger. And then the final comment I'll make, just when you look at both our spring training landscape and you look at both facilities, I'm just talking about Roger Dean Chevrolet Stadium. Ballpark of the Palm Beaches has, is also an economic engine. If I was to look at the total, not including Major League Baseball, but the total impact of the amateur events that are taking place, also in the county's offseason, those overnight accommodations would rise to almost 47,000. The total events, amateur events, non-related spring training events would double. These facilities allow us to host organizations like USA Baseball, the national governing body for the sport, Perfect Game, which is one of the largest organizers for baseball showcases. Last year, we hosted an Olympic qualifier at Ballpark of the Palm Beaches, one of only four in the world and the only one in the United States. And both of these facilities work together. Some of the events that we're doing now, you can't do one without the other facility. So there's no doubt that baseball is a huge economic driver, and from a, not a leisure perspective, but from a group perspective, baseball, and due to our incredible landscape here, driven by these spring training facilities, baseball ranks in the only behind the equestrian industry in terms of creating overnight accommodations and economic impact. It's the top driver for sports, one of the top two anyways, in Palm Beach County.
In closing, staff is recommending approval of the developer agreement, the restated use agreement, the reimbursement resolution, and the budget transfer. And is also requesting authorization to proceed with the submission of the application required under the state certification process. We would like to inform the board that Caroline O'Quinnor, Tony Brazil from the Marlins, both of them, Mike Buero, Dan Good from the Cardinals, Mike Bauer, who's the general manager for Roger Dean, and Gregory Lee from Baker Hostetler are here in the audience and have come prepared to address the board if, so the board wishes, they represent JSL. Before we address any questions, as you may deem appropriate, I will be remiss if I fail to recognize the significant contribution that prior retiring, my predecessor Audrey Wolf made towards getting these agreements into a final form that could be considered by the board. So that said, this concludes staff presentation.
Thank you, Izamay. Thank you, everybody, for the presentation. A couple of questions, and I'm going to recognize Commissioner Moreno. Your financial modeling that you have presented here, obviously, there are changes in the wind. The Fed has already telegraphed the idea of raising interest by a point in the next two months. Is all that factored into this?
We are factoring it, and we're very lucky, Mayor, that tourism is really pretty solid in terms of people's desire to get out and do things. And I think sports tourism is probably one of the most recession-proof of all of those. We saw it in the 2009 downturn, where the first thing that really recovered was sports tourism. So that's why we're comfortable at our first and fourth penny. And what we're looking at now, and this is what we talked about at our budget meeting last week at the TDC, is we could be looking at, right now, we're at $60 million was our budget, $68 million is our current forecast, but at the rates we're seeing out in the marketplace, which we know the rates will have a downturn, we could be up in the $75 million to $78 million for a 2023 year. So I think we're in solid positions with our commitments that we have in our lower uses side, and I think if we manage it appropriately, we can manage to be, have very solid reserves going out for many, many, many years and still make more investments.
Does this leave anything behind for any other projects within the county? I mean, you know, obviously, this is sucking a lot of the bed tax money into two specific projects.
Well, absolutely, Mayor, but the good thing is that we had some great partners in coming up with this agreement. And when Audrey was here, as Izamay said, Audrey was a very, very big part of this early negotiation. We both all decided that $150,000 would be that commitment for nine years from the county. So we are only putting in $150,000 a year for nine years. We will take the back end, but by then, those bed taxes will be more than enough to handle that back-end loading of the bond payments that Palm Beach County will have to make. So that allows us to still make some investments early on, convention center expansions, things like that that we're going to be looking at. So by all means, I think we're in solid position for reserves.
And as far as the Jupiter funding agreement, that's a continuing negotiation. Should they not come forward, they would lose their rights to use those fields?
We have, so to answer our first question, yes, it's a continuing communication right now. We do not have a funding agreement approved. We had a workshop meeting last Thursday, and we remain hopeful that it will lead to, you know, successful end goal. At the end, under the current agreement and in light, the recommended agreement, and in light with prior board direction, we have included language that says that this board may consent or not withhold its consent to Jupiter Fields Agreement, you know, if the funding agreement were not to materialize.
Very good. Commissioner Moreno, you are recognized.
I have more comments than I do questions. I'm very familiar, obviously. We've been to two town meetings. The town of Jupiter still does have questions, but I know that Mike Bauer, where are Mike and George have been kind enough to accompany Izamay and I to the council meetings. And Mike is going to be taking several of the council members on a tour of the facility so they can see just what's necessary to be done. I'd actually like to just make some comments. I think you all did a great presentation, so I don't have any questions on the presentation. I do want to impress upon everyone that, you know, there's 15 teams in the state of Florida, and there's only 13 facilities, and two of those facilities are right here in Palm Beach County. Baseball is a huge economic impact for our county, an economic driver, lots of bed nights, and specifically for the town of Jupiter, there are, I think there is only one other park in the state that allows for their local sports program, youth sports program, to use the facility. So Jupiter is in a very unique position to continue that if we can come to an agreement. So also the impact just on the town of Jupiter itself, I mean, downtown Abacoa has a multitude of restaurants and facilities that are in business because of baseball being in downtown Jupiter. They also, and correct me if I'm not wrong, but with this new expansion and improvements, Wi-Fi signal is going to be improved. Can you tell us some other local improvements that might occur due to the facility investment?
So the improvements can be divided into public use improvements, shared use improvements, and private uses. Private uses are basically improvements to the clubhouses at the pitching mound, but as it relates to public areas improvements, they are aimed towards improving the visitor experience, right, and bringing that stadium to a level that is comparable to its counterparts. And again, we got to keep in mind that this is a 25-year-old stadium, almost. So there are improvements to scoreboard, the sound system, the Wi-Fi, the group area next to third base, the concessions, the team store, maintenance building so that the facility can continue to operate in an optimal way, storage, the visitors clubhouse, which goes back to our colleagues' ability to market the facility, right, for other uses, relocation of the bullpen, improvements to the security system, improvements to the offices that serve those patrons coming in and those who are buying tickets, improvement to the press box, and then our in-public places, which is a key component in every project that the county pursues, capital improvements. We have shared use improvements as well, which are meant to be used by public and the private, and I need to highlight that as it relates to Roger Dean, those will be very particular amenities that we do not have elsewhere. We're going to have state-of-the-art bedding tunnels, agility field, a theater, and an education center. You may recall that back in December 2019, when Audrey came to this board for the approval of the term sheet, she was as well highlighting those items because they certainly add value to Roger Dean as a whole.
Thank you. Other than the economic impact, which is huge, this is something that we all need to do, and we need to do it. this is something that we all need to do, and we need to do it in a timely manner because time is short and interest rates are going up. So if there is, anyone else have questions? I would actually go ahead and make the motion to approve this.
All right. Well, I'm going to hold your motion abeyance. Vice Mayor, would you like to comment?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of points. One is, and I think in reference to the question you asked, Mayor, was the impact of interest rate increases. So if I did, I mean, this is correct. For every 1% interest rates go up, it adds $1 million a year in the payment. So if they go up two points by 2024, it'll be an extra $2 million per year that we will be sharing. So we'll get 2/3 of that, so that would be 1.2 million.
So under the current financial framework, the county's contribution cap is fixed at $75.1 million. The state contribution is fixed, assuming we get certified, which we certainly hope to, at $50 million. And the team's annual fee is the one that varies, okay? So they are certainly carrying a risk on that percentage interest rate. And that's one of the reasons why they have stated, and they're here to say differently, if so they wish, they want to move forward, right? Because there is a risk included with the possible potential increases.
So just to make sure I understand what you're saying. So the state is coming in, if approved, will come in at $2 million a year in their grant. We're going to do $75 million, but it's going to be front-end loaded at $150,000 per year maximum payment for the first nine years.
That is correct.
And then after that, what's it going to go to?
It'll go to roughly about $3.6 million, I think it is, for a couple of years in the 10th and 11th year, and then we'll probably up at about 4.7, capping at the 75.1 that Ismae has mentioned.
And so the interest rates have no bearing?
Our contribution is fixed. That's part of the negotiation that took place back in December of 2019.
Good. And then, I guess this is probably to our administrator. If in fact, because these are revenue bonds, can't use ad valorem taxes to fund these, if there was to be some kind of interruption in bed taxes, where would the funds come from?
Because these are bed tax dollars, this would be our number-one responsibility is to pay back the debt service. So we would adjust all budgets associated with bed tax dollars. This would be, again, our number-one. So we would reduce others' revenue coming in.
I would, I guess my question really is what the contingency would be if in fact those revenues, because there are existing debts that continue to need to be paid, revenue bonds. Where, what would be, what other resources would you have available besides TDC dollars?
If we got in a position where there were no TDC dollars available whatsoever, we'd look at our other revenue sources in the county. I do not believe that we would ever hit that bottom level.
Just a contingency question.
Absolutely. And that's what revenue bonds are. You pledge all of your other revenues except ad valorem to pay back the debt service. But I am pretty confident that, you know, with $68 million that we would, if the economy took a significant downturn with tourism dollars, that we would come down, but we would not come down to the point we can't pay debt service. That would be our number-one priority for debt service.
Thank you.
And Glenn, you were saying that in the past, the last downturn in 2007, we didn't see a real drop off in the demand for seats.
We had a 20% drop in bed taxes for 2008, but the recovery was very quick. It was a V-recovery. We came up, and then we leveled off. And tourism was really one of the first ones to recover across the nation in terms of the recession. People still worked to get their vacations, and certainly sports. It's tough to say no to your kids.
Right. Okay, very good. I don't see any more lights on. Commissioner Moreno, you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion only if I can chip out the first pitch when this happens.
No, no, you're not putting that condition on there.
Yes, I will make the motion.
We have a clean motion to approve from Commissioner Moreno and a second by Commissioner Bernard. All in favor, all opposed? Show that it's being approved, six to zero. Thank you very much for the very thorough presentation. All right, we're going to go back now to item 5A1. And Commissioner Bernard, I believe, oh, yes, Commissioner, I'm sorry, county administrator.
Verdina, yes. I'd like to thank the teams for their efforts in working with us and also acknowledge the fact that they have been very good teammates over almost 25 years. So thank you very much for all your effort. We do appreciate it. And to my awesome, outstanding staff, thank you for the hard work as well. I don't think Ismae sleeps at all.
I noticed you didn't say awesome, outstanding Board of County Commissioners.
Well, that goes without saying.
Oh, okay.
But thank the board because you allowed us to do this. So thank you very much for your support.
You're welcome, on behalf of the board. Okay, Mr. Bonlaren, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Administrator Baker. Have the pleasure of introducing this item to you. This is a special day in Palm Beach County. We have one of Palm Beach County's own who's joining us, flew in this morning from Washington, DC. So apologize for the little bit of the delay in getting to this item. But, you know, it's hard to expect somebody to look that good and be here right at 9:30. So if I could ask Clarence Anthony to come up to the rostrum here, it would be great. We appreciate it. We have two special presentations that we wanted to present. The first being a resolution commemorating the 30th anniversary of the opening of the Clarence E. Anthony Branch Library. And before Commissioner Bernard gets to that, I just wanted to note, with me here is Mr. Doug Crane, our library director. Aurora Arthe is in the back of, please, oh, I'm sorry, behind us there. Aurora is with us. He is our deputy director. Margaret Berry, who's our north area coordinator, is joining us as well. Graham Brunk, who's our manager in the Glades of our Belgrade-South Bay and Pohque branches. Deborah Gadsden, who's our lead supervisor in South Bay, is with us. And Nelsi Karakamo-Membrano, who is our associate in South Bay, is also joining us as well. So we want to thank our team from the Glades and the South Bay Library here. And Commissioner Bernard, I know that you have a resolution that you would like to read.
Thank you very much, Todd. It's a pleasure to do this resolution for Mr. Clarence Anthony. And when I was in Tallahassee, they used to think that he was my dad.
It still happens when I walk down the street. They're like, Commissioner. I was like, oh, no, don't want that job, no.
So, because we do, like, when I cut my hair, like, it's complete replica. So the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, presents this resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, commemorating the 30th anniversary of the opening of the Clarence E. Anthony Branch Library and in recognition of Mr. Anthony's many years of service and advocacy, providing for an effective date. Whereas in 1984, Clarence E. Anthony was elected mayor of South Bay at the age of 24 with a priority to build a public library. And whereas in March 1991, the Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners approved $372,000 to build a 4,000-square-foot facility at 375 Southwest 2nd Avenue and approved naming the building the Clarence E. Anthony Branch. And whereas on May 22, 1992, the Clarence E. Anthony Branch Library officially opened to the public in a ceremony. And whereas for the past 30 years, the library has provided educational services and resources to the residents of South Bay, including a collection of materials to borrow, study space, a community meeting room, internet computers, and free Wi-Fi access. And whereas Mr. Anthony now serves as CEO, Executive Director of the National League of Cities, and says that building the library was probably the most impactful thing I would say I did in that role. And whereas the library continues to serve the residents of South Bay six days a week with access to all the resources and services that the entire Palm Beach County library system has to offer. Congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I know that Mayor Anthony's dying to say something right now, but we've got another special presentation that we would like to present to you as well. This is something that we don't do very often before this body, but our administrator felt very strongly about it and with the concurrence of the board. Mayor Weinroth?
Thank you, Todd. And Mr. Anthony, we're going to do something new here today. So let me first do my little presentation here. In 1984, Clarence Anthony was elected as the mayor of South Bay when he was 24 years old and served until 2008. This is where Mr. Anthony began his career in public service and served in that capacity for 24 years. When Clarence was a kid, he read a lot. And when he became mayor, he knew it was, if he was going to help kids, he'd have to have a library in South Bay. So for five years in a row, he lobbied our regional state legislators. I don't know, were you guys up there at that point? No? Okay. With the same speech, South Bay didn't have the money to build it, and he knew they couldn't maintain it, so he fought to include it in the Palm Beach County library system. It opened in 1992, and it's called the Clarence E. Anthony Library Branch of Palm Beach County. If you ask him, he'd say, it's probably the most impactful thing that I would say I did in that role. It's changing lives. As he's right, it is. The same way Clarence continued in his career to change people's lives, Mr. Anthony has been the forefront of politics in the United States and internationally for the past 20 years, culminating with the productive presidencies of the Florida League of Cities and the National League of Cities, respectively. Mr. Anthony has also served as the first Vice President of the International Union of Local Authorities and a founding treasurer of the United Cities and Local Governments and international voice for local governments for four years. Most recently, he served as the interim manager of the UCLG. In 2013, he was named the National League Cities Executive Director. Under his leadership, the NLC delivered billions of dollars in direct flexible federal relief through the CARES Act and historic ARPA to help support local governments respond, recover, and rebuild from COVID-19. During his leadership, the NLC has also ushered passage of the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act and has been delivering transformative investments in transportation, broadband, and water to communities across the country. Mr. Anthony is a member of the Council of Undisturbed Communities appointed by the U.S. Small Business Administrator Isabella Cassilis Guzman and is tasked along with his fellow committee members with developing a supportive policy recommendations for undisturbed small business owners. He also serves on the Advisory Board of the University of Illinois Chicago Urban Forum. In 2020, Mr. Anthony received the National Forum for Black Public Administrators Marks of Excellence Award. He is known as a creative and thoughtful leader in his community, in our community, and is considered an expert in citizen engagement and the techniques that build the sense of community within cities. He holds a master's degree in public administration with a specialization in city growth management policy from Florida Atlantic University. He also has a wife, Tammy, daughter Skylar, and son Rydell. It is for these reasons and many more that Palm Beach County honors you. And today, with the resolution that was just read by Commissioner Bernard, we are commemorating the 30th anniversary of the Clarence E. Anthony Library Branch. But today, for the first time, we are going to bestow on you the key to the county.
Ah, thank you.
We got it right here.
All right.
Mr. Clarence Anthony, before you speak, our fellow county commissioner for District 7, Commissioner Melissa McKinley, is not here today. And typically, she would be the one who would give the proclamation. And so I want to make sure that I recognize her for her services to the residents of South Bay and working with you to continue to help all of the residents of the Glades. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I say a few words? Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, county commissioners, and one of my best friends in the world, Verdina Baker, who, in fact, I met at FAU. We've known each other that long. And our journeys have crossed all these years, family as well as professionally. And the library staff from South Bay and all of the library staff in Palm Beach County, I'm just so honored to be here. So when I was flying in this morning, I was landing, and I looked down, and I said, that's my home. That's Palm Beach County. That's the place that I grew up in. It may have been a different side of Palm Beach County, but Palm Beach County is my home. And it's where I was born in Belgrade. I graduated from county schools, Palm Beach Community College, FAU, as you indicated. This is my home because I worked for HCD, Housing and Community Development, years ago. I was an aide to a county commissioner, Ken Adams. I served on Tourist Development Council, Discover Palm Beach County, the Economic Council, the Business Development Board. I was the first executive or director of the Office of Equal Opportunity for Palm Beach County. This is my home, and I'm so proud of what my home county is doing. And that's why I return here often, and I'm still a part of this community. I, when I served on those boards and councils, I brought my authentic self to everything I did. I represented a voice that was not represented. I'm an African-American man, grew up in a very impoverished community. But when I sat there, I also brought the voices of other people of color who did not have a seat on the Tourist Development Council, who did not sit around with the Economic Council and be able to talk business policy, environmental policy, because that's what we needed at that time, and we still need that. But I also bring that same perspective as the CEO and Executive Director of the National League of Cities. And that's why we got the ARPA dollars, the CARES money, as well as the infrastructure money. But that was about filling the gaps that exist in Palm Beach County as well as in our country. Because that money, just like a library, can change the lives of people who live, work, and as we say in Palm Beach County, also play and discover this beautiful place. The library, of all those things I talked about, I grew up in the Glades, and I had a choice as a kid to play on the playground or to go in that mobile library. And oftentimes, I took the opportunity to go to the mobile library than to play. Now, I missed out on a lot of junk talking and other stuff, but it was my decision. But in that library, I dreamed and read about places that I wanted to go and things I wanted to do. But in that library, I dreamed and read about places that I wanted to go and things I wanted to do. Never imagined I could go to Paris. Never imagined I could work in Washington, D.C. Never imagined I could own a home because we were living in impoverished poverty. I tell you all that story and those stories because I want you to know that your decisions make such an impact, not just on stadiums, not just on buildings, not just on public safety, but those little things, right now, we got the greatest opportunity to do something in Palm Beach County because we got all of that money from ARPA, the infrastructure bill. The question is, how are we going to use that? In my life, reserves and savings is one thing, but how do I use that to empower others and make each other better? The thing that is challenging all of us now, and I make the point about working for Ken Adams, who was a Republican, and I'm, at that time, I'm nonpartisan now because I'm a CEO, sorta, I was a staunch Democrat. I was vice chair of the Florida Democratic Party, but one thing that that Republican and that Democrat had in common was that we were going to work together no matter what for what was right for the citizens of Palm Beach County, not for a party. What was right for Palm Beach County, and local government is just such the best place to do that, because we can do so much so quick, where the legislative branch that some of you served in, you pontificate it for four or five years, but anyway, so, but we can make decisions that can change the lives of people. And in closing, I'll just say this, there are so many more Clarencees in Palm Beach County, whether it's in Delray, Boynton, West Palm Beach, Riviera Beach, Lime Street, Lime, Jupiter area, Palm Beach Gardens, all of your districts in the Glades. There are so many more that we can help, but this library is something that has changed the lives of a lot of kids in the Glades area, in South Bay, who never thought that they would have a facility. I feel like I'm real old after 30 years. I cannot believe it. In fact, I can't believe I was 32 when I was blessed with this honor. It still scares me because to have your name someplace, to have your name on these, on this podium and this dais, means a lot, and I don't want to ever let South Bay down. I don't want to ever let Palm Beach County down because this is my home, and this is all of our homes, and I can't thank you enough. I'm blessed to have a great wife who's been with me all these years beside me and a family that made the difference, and the only thing that is missing, and anybody who knows me, I am a mama's boy. I was a baby in my family of six. My mom was not here to see this moment, and I'm just talking to her all day to say thank you for this blessing and thank you, guys. God bless y'all, and hey, thank you for welcoming me home. Thank you.
Now, you gotta hold those.
Oh, you gotta hold this. You know, I'm out of that mayoral thing. I don't do that anymore. It's been a long time.
Yeah, library too.
Ms. Anthony, would you please join us?
Just need a motion to adopt the resolution real quick.
Yeah.
Just need a motion to adopt the resolution. It's okay.
All right, I'm going to look for a motion to adopt the resolution. Commissioner Bernard, would you like to make that motion?
Second.
I have a second by the vice mayors. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm looking for Commissioner Sacks. Where'd you run off to?
Yes.
Just say yes.
Yes.
Okay, we have six to zero approving the motion.
Thank you, and Mayor, just so you know, tomorrow we'll be officially presenting this as well to Mr. Anthony at a ceremony at 1:00 at the South Bay Library, so we thank Commissioner Bernard for being there with us to present that as well tomorrow.
Representing us well. Thank you. All right, now we're going to move on to more business at hand. We're going to deal with item number 5D1. This is a recommendation by staff to approve a preliminary reading to, an advertisement for a public hearing on June 14, 2022, 9:30 a.m., and it would be an ordinance that the staff has determined the need to amend Chapter 21, Article 2 of the Palm Beach County Code, Parks and Recreation to conform to state law and provide better management of the park property in addition to several administrative modifications. I'm looking for a motion to approve. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Weiss. I have a second by Commissioner Kerner. All in favor? All opposed? Show that it's been approved, six to zero. Thank you very much. We appreciate your presentation, erudite as it should be. Okay, we're going to move on now to item 5E1, Housing and Economic Development. I'm going to look for a motion. I have a Commissioner Kerner has made a motion. Commissioner Bernard has seconded it. Just make a note that neither the taxing power nor faith and credit of the county nor the county funds are pledged to pay the principal redemption premium, if any, or interest on the bonds, and I'm not seeing any further conversation. All in favor? All opposed? Show this has been approved, six to zero. Moving on. We're moving on to item number 5E2, again Housing and Economic Development. Do we need a presentation? I see no need for presentation. I'm looking for Commissioner Bernard to make the motion. You want to make the motion? It's in your district. Well, that's fine. I will defer to the Commissioner from District 1.
Do you know my name?
Don't, don't do that. Don't do that.
Commissioner Marino will make, make a motion to adopt.
And neither the taxing power nor-
Neither the taxing power nor the faith and credit of the county nor any county fund shall be pledged to pay the principal premium, if any, or interest on the bonds.
So Commissioner Marino 1 is going to make the motion. Commissioner Marino 2 is going to, I mean Commissioner Maria 2. Okay, Commissioner Sacks is going to second Commissioner Marino's motion. All in favor? All opposed? Show that it's approved, six to zero. Another very fine presentation. All right, we're coming to the home stretch here. We're on 5F1. This is Engineering Public Works, and I'm looking to see, oh, let's have a little bit of conversation about this good thing about what we're spending money on.
Mayor, good morning. Briefly, yes, just want to give you an update. You know, the item before your budget transfer is related to it. Wanted to give Dave and Steve Carrier, Assistant County Engineer, an opportunity just to talk you quickly through what has transpired to get us to this point, but also wanted to spend just a second with the board's acknowledgement, recognizing a lot of the folks that did the work on this project. It was very unique, and a lot of unique things went into supporting it, making it happen, and bringing it to an operable bridge at this point. So with that, I'd ask Dave to walk you through this really quickly.
We love our bascule bridges.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, and board of county commissioners. Just briefly, briefly, it's a request to actually asking, we've got most of the bills in, ready to that, and asking for a budget transfer over $26,000 to fund the emergency repairs for the bridge, and so I'll turn it over to Steve Carrier, who'll actually walk through the details in terms of that effort. Steve?
Yes, so. I'll take you through the anatomy of a bascule bridge failure.
And we all want to hear about this.
So on March 3, while going through a bridge opening sequence, one of the shafts sheared into two parts, and the bridge was stuck and locked in its upright position.
All right, I have to stop you for a second. I need to pull my quorum back together.
Right.
Okay, we have a quorum.
So the bridge was stuck and locked in its upright position, closed to motorists and pedestrians. Next slide. During the next few days, the damaged parts were removed by Roden Bridge, shipped to the Stewart Machine Company, a company based out of Alabama, and you see the picture on the right is the, shows the shaft and the gear assembly. Next slide. On March 8, Roden Bridge is on site with Hardisty and Hanover, and H&amp;H is an expert bascule bridge consultant with an office in Fort Lauderdale, and they are hired to conduct inspections, analysis, and the coordination of any needed repairs. Next slide. And so during that week, Stewart Machine fabricates a new shaft and reassembles, reassembles it with the existing gear.
This is not something you could get at Home Depot.
No, it's not.
Okay.
Next slide. Around the same time, H&amp;H has been on site and identifies the need to replace additional drive shaft components, including a damaged bearing, and so those components are also shipped off to Stewart. H&amp;H also recommends further testing of the machinery in both spans. Remember, the failure happened just on the west span, so now they're recommending further testing of the machinery in both spans. The pictures, the picture on the left is the existing shaft sheared at the end, the bearings inside that pillar block there, and the middle picture is, is a gear on a truing table inside the machine shop, and the picture on the right is the new shaft assembly which Stewart had fabricated. Next slide. During the next week, the additional components are fabricated by Stewart Machine Company, including a new bearing and bolts, and the picture you see there is, is the bearing, which is located inside that pillar block. Next slide. So on March 29 and 30, so we're a little less than one month into the closure, H&amp;H and Seacoast, and so Seacoast was the contractor hired by H&amp;H, and so H&amp;H, Seacoast, and Roden Bridge are on site for the initial installation and repair work. However, it is evident that the tolerances during the repair work, it became evident that the tolerances exceed the specifications for the original design, and so the components were shipped back to Stewart for minor, we're talking very, less than inches, less than quarter inches, for minor adjustments but critical adjustments. Next slide. So less than a week later, the parts have been adjusted, and H&amp;H and Seacoast and Roden Bridge are back in, are back on site to reinstall the parts, and this is on April 4, about a month into the closure. Next slide. So now all the parts are installed, and during the next three weeks, from April 11 to April 25, H&amp;H and Roden Bridge puts, put the bridge through an extensive testing and inspection period with ongoing multiple adjustments and fine tuning of the bridge, of the bridge mechanics. Next slide. And so, ta-da, 57 days later, after the closure, the bridge was reopened on Friday, April 29, and according to our experts, the bridge appears to be operating fairly well. Remember, it's a 70-year-old bridge. Next slide. And last week, the engineering department issued an advertisement to hire a bascule bridge design team to study the replacement of the bridge, including a possible design-build alternate, and to also assist us with applications for future grant opportunities, which takes me to the picture on the right, where on March 19, Speaker Pelosi attended a press conference or held a press conference at the bridge to highlight the importance of the new infrastructure bill, which we are hoping will help us fund the estimated $40 million needed to replace the bridge. And so I would like to publicly thank Stewart Machine Company and Hardisty and Hanover for their expertise and their guidance, their responsiveness and expedited good work and last, but more importantly, and it just happens that this week is the National Public Works Week, and Dave and I would like to thank the following Roden Bridge staff who step up time and time again, be it hurricanes, be it flooding issues, be it bascule bridge issues, and if they will stand to be recognized, I will call out their name. Adam Faustini is our director of Roden Bridge. Dan Doyle is our assistant director of Roden Bridge. Tom Copini is our bridge superintendent. John Myers is our assistant bridge superintendent. Dennis Ferny is our maintenance supervisor. James Torese is our trades crew chief. We have three industrial electricians that work on our bridges, James Andrew, Darwin Cabrero, and Daniel Desette, and we have four bridge mechanics, Ronald Ashcraft, Gary Laird, David Silustri, and C. Dallas Schumate, and I just want to thank them for all their hard work and all their after-hours work.
Your county and your residents, thank you.
Lot of hard work and a lot of after-hours work, a lot of weekend work to make this all happen, and if you'll indulge me for just one more quick minute, Dave and I would like to update the board that we and Roden Bridge are working diligently on our bascule bridge opening and closing processes with our bridge tenders, including the following planned safety enhancements. We're planning for additional signage and markings. We're planning additional bridge tender training. We're in the process of producing a public service announcement for the public, and with Administrator Baker's approval, we are recommending the purchase of a camera system at each movable bridge that will greatly enhance safety with a detection and an audible warning system that alerts when motorists, pedestrians, or boats are within the danger zone of our, of our bascule bridges. And with that, that concludes my presentation. Again, we're asking for a budget transfer of $206,910 to cover the repairs, and with that, we're open to any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Ricks, do we have any other bascule bridges that we need to be concerned about?
They're on a constant observation, and so this one's the key one right now in terms of the age of the bridge, but as we do your regular inspection, if we find something that we need to, for merger, capital improvement, we'll take a look at that.
Okay. All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve. I have a motion by Commissioner, Vice Mayor Weiss. Commissioner Sacks, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mayor, and I, as I don't think I have any bridges in my district, you brought up a very good point, Mayor. Do we have an inspection program for all of the bridges in, in Palm Beach County?
Yes, Mayor, I'll stick on.
Yeah, we do. So we have eight bascule bridges that Palm Beach County maintains. The state has many other bascule bridges. We actually have a swing bridge also out in the Glades. The bascule bridges go through, all the bridges go through a inspection every two years, but the bascules actually have an extra inspection period, so every year the bascule bridges are inspected.
And one more, if I could, Mayor. Do you, do, you had mentioned that there would be audible sounds and sirens if boats or people or anybody else would be in a danger zone. Will that be available to all of the bridges that it would, you know, pertain to here in the county, sir?
It's up to the, to the board. So we have eight bascules. We have a recommendation between Administrator Baker, and we presented that to her, and it's coming to the board during the budget process, so that's-
There's going to be a balance, as you well know, with all the needs that we have. However, the infrastructure bill is, I mean, the infrastructure program is out there. We're still waiting on some details, so we will be going after those as well, but we've got a number of bridges that we will be replacing. They're in the process, and we will continue to move forward with safety issues. Safety is number one, and so we'll be bringing those things to you at this point. So if I may, to summarize, we will be inspecting all of the bridges in Palm Beach County, especially those that are, you say vascular? How did, how did you?
Vascular. What do you mean they move?
Vascular, okay.
Up and across.
Sounded like vascular emoji, and that those bridges that require or- Sounded like vascular emoji. And that those bridges that require or are in need of the safety features that will be done on this George Bush bridge will also be reviewed for those that require it.
Correct.
Thank you, sir.
I'd also like to add that Palm Beach Lakes Bridge is our next major task. And that is a part, that was a part of the IST funding. And again, we're constantly monitoring the infrastructure grants to make sure that we take advantage of every grant that's possibly out there.
Yeah, we have many bridges under our sales tax. Sixth Avenue South Bridge over Lake Osborne is happening now. And, and Palm Beach Lakes Bridge is coming up, but many others.
And clearly, Speaker Pelosi and Representative Frankel know that this is on our wish list for the bipartisan infrastructure bill to get this taken care of as quickly as possible. I have a motion by Vice Mayor. I have a second by Commissioner Bernard. All in favor, all opposed? Show this as approved, six to zero. Thank you, gentlemen and lady.
Mayor, may I thank, personally thank our Public Works gentlemen that are in the audience? I want to thank you because you also bail us out during hurricanes and taking down and being responsible for all those lights being removed and immediately going back up. Can't thank you enough. And for making sure our generators are out and actually working. So thank you for the hard work. Please share with the other employees in Public Works that we are very appreciative of all their hard work. Thank you.
Yes, you have permission to commend them. You don't have to be. I don't think you could be. Okay, we're moving right along, and it's time for Commission District Appointments. I will start with my good friend, Commissioner Marino.
Yes, I would like to reappoint Ms. Penny Pompey to the Planning Commission.
I have a motion by Commissioner Marino, seconded by the Vice Mayor. All in favor, all opposed? Show that as being approved, six to zero. Any other appointments? None. Commissioner Sacks, any appointments?
Believe I do. I'm just opening the bridge here to find it.
You're, you're okay? You want to appoint a bridge tender or anything like that?
Just wondering who's, who's tending the bridge right now. Just give me a minute, and I will, I'll find it.
If you find something, we'll come back.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to appoint Angela Van, reappoint Angela Van to the Planning Commission.
I have a second by the Vice Mayor. All in favor, all opposed? Six to zero. Anything else? Not yet? Okay, good. Commissioner Kerner?
No appointments, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of our colleague Melissa McKinley in District 6, I'd like to reappoint Marcia Hayden to the Planning Commission and reappoint Kylie Harper Larson to the Planning Commission.
I have a second by Commissioner Kerner. All in favor, all opposed? Show that as approved, six, zero. Anything else? Anything from your district?
No, sir.
Alrighty. Oh, Commissioner Sacks, I knew we'd be back.
Thank you, Mayor, for waiting. And for District 5, I'd like to reappoint Dr. Rick Stopek to the Planning Commission.
I have a motion by the Commissioner, seconded by the Vice Mayor. All opposed, I will, in favor, all opposed? Show that as approved, six to zero. Any others?
No, not at this time.
Give you plenty of time over here, Commissioner.
Well, thank you very much. We're done.
All right, time for staff comments. Administration, I'm giving you ample opportunity here. All right. County Attorney. Boy, everybody's quiet all of a sudden. All right, let's do Commissioner Comments. I'm going to start with Commissioner Marino.
I would just like to say it was my honor to be with Verdina on Friday when she won the Emerald Award from the Girl Scouts of America.
We knew she was a gem.
All that she has done. And it was a wonderful event, and Verdina had wonderful words to say, so congratulations.
Congratulations. Okay, let's go to Commissioner Sacks.
Thank you. I have an amazing announcement to make at this time, that the county is going to be putting on our first economic summit on June 2nd at the Convention Center. It's going to be huge. And every county commissioner has a very important role to play. I am making this announcement more for the public, but because I know that each of our commissioners are going to participate in this, and you will, this is going to be exciting because it's an economic summit at Palm Beach County post-COVID, and it's going to be focused on the two most important parts of our development, and that, and our future, is housing and transportation. Our county staff under Ms. Baker is working on it, and I see Dorrett here, has been a tremendous help. So I look forward to working with our county staff and my colleagues on this first premier economic summit here for Palm Beach County.
And we thank you, Commissioner, for initiating that idea and looking forward to participating. Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I have a special, special announcement that I have to make. Today is my Chief of Staff's birthday. We'll need a manual, so if I don't say it, I can't go back upstairs. So, but I want to wish her a happy birthday.
Okay, and you had something you wanted to discuss on 401A, yeah?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I've had the chance to learn a little bit about the special pay plans that we can offer to, that government can offer to our employees. This is like a unique option in handling special forms of compensation at retirement. And these special forms of compensations are accumulated sick leave, vacation pay, PTO, or early retirement incentives. And this will get the opportunity to save, a saving for our employees and also the county. So would love for, to give the county administrator the opportunity to do research about the 401A special pay plan, and also to return a proposal to us in regards to what's best for, for the county.
This would be a companion to the FRS plan that everybody is entitled?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner, without objection. Okay.
And then one last thing. We did receive the email yesterday regarding, from Ms. Sherri Brown regarding the gas tax, the local option gas tax. And I don't know if we would, would have a discussion, but would love to have staff look at that also, to see what can we do in regards to creating some type of local option tax holiday for residents, if it's possible. And would love to have a discussion regarding that in the future.
We could have a start of a discussion right now. I see Commissioner Sacks is looking to be recognized on that subject?
No.
No, okay. I was also contacted by the press on that particular issue and got the same email that you did from Mr. Bonlaren. And in my conversations with him, I think we need to make sure that we understand that there is a price to the, suspending the gas tax. And one of the big prices is the price to our public transportation. I think that it runs contrary to our priority to try and get people to forsake their car and adopt public transportation. And a very significant part of our gas taxes goes in that direction. I think it's also important to recognize, as Mr. Bonlaren pointed out in his memo, that municipalities are dependent on those gas tax dollars also. So while I think that it certainly is worthy of conversation, and I know the state is going to have a holiday on gas taxes, I would be cautious before we go in that direction. And so that would be my personal feeling. Commissioner Sacks, do you have back on?
Yes, I, I am, I didn't intend to speak on it because I thought it's so preliminary. But I absolutely agree with you, Mayor, on this issue that our 12 cent percentage of, of, of tax on gas, I would love to see it, I'd love to see all the taxes go away. But these taxes are especially important for, for our public transportation, which really alleviates a lot of the need for us to drive. If we continue to put money into public transportation, it may alleviate a lot of the, a lot of the gas that we use. And so it would be counterproductive to, certainly to, to stop the, the money that goes in the public transportation, as well as the money from those taxes that go into our roadway. The major investments of that tax money is into our roadways, and that's extremely important. And also, little bit of a cultural shift that we may do that you did mention, Mayor, about the issue of maybe we need to look at zero fossil fuel emissions one day. And as we go forward in our quest for better sustainability in our climate, that to lessen our thirst for fossil fuels and gasoline may indicate that our shift towards a more sustainable future for, for ourselves, our children and grandchildren. So I think it's, I think it's, that's what, that's what I would like to say on that subject, certainly. And thank you, Mayor, for bringing that up.
Sure. Ms. Kaufman, I'm going to recognize you. Mr. Bonlaren, would you head to the microphone?
We did some preliminary research on this yesterday, and it is not looking very likely. There is a statutory scheme that sets forth how we can impose the tax. We do it by an ordinance. And then we do inter-local agreements with our various municipalities distributing the tax. So at the very least, we're looking at amending the ordinance. And there is nothing in the statute that appears to give us any authority to call for a holiday. And I think that is why the state went ahead and did it by the legislature. So preliminarily, I'm going to say that that looks like we are not, do not have that ability. And if we did, the only time you can terminate the gas tax is in December. And so it's, it's just not a simple type of thing that you can just say, okay, we're not going to collect for one month. So it would require, if assuming we could go forward, which at this point I'm saying, you know, 75%, no, we can't. But assuming we could, we would be amending an ordinance, and we'd have to deal with all these municipalities with their inter-local agreements where we have guaranteed that they're going to receive this money. So it's looking highly unlikely.
Thank you. Mr. Bonlaren, I think you would explain that during the last legislative session, we took pains to uncouple the state's decision to have a tax holiday from the municipal. Can you elaborate on that?
Yeah. So, Mayor, in our discussions, you had asked about, you know, just the ability to be able to do such a holiday locally. We reached out to the county attorney's office. They did that research. And working with, you know, our legislative team in Tallahassee and with the Florida Association of Counties, oftentimes what we find is when the legislature is looking to do some of these different holidays, you know, local government sometimes gets wrapped up into that. And particularly when it comes to the gas tax, you know, for us, one thing that, through the memo that, or the email that Ms. Brown sent out to you, you can see clearly that, you know, about two-thirds of the money that we raise from our gas tax goes to Palm Tran and funding operations of Palm Tran. About a third of that goes to our engineering department for some of their works. So, you know, clearly.
Like bascule bridges.
Yeah, correct. But clearly, you know, the kinds of things that we're funding, and that was a policy decision that was made a while back by the Board of County Commissioners in terms of, you know, that funding source and how that that flowed into both Palm Tran and Engineering. So, you know, when, when we look at some of these funding sources that the state is looking at, we make sure that, you know, and we try to do it too when we have the conversations with, with our, with our taxes related to Advalorem, as they're trying to make cuts in Advalorem, to say, hold on a second, you know, these are local government taxes that, you know, you're putting on the table, and you're asking us then to go back to the table and, you know, our respective tables, and figure out how to make those appropriate adjustments while the state, at the same time, is claiming victory, you know, for some of those major tax cuts. So to the gas tax end, you know, we wanted to make sure that when the state was looking at doing that holiday, how do we keep local governments whole? And, you know, and more specifically, how to keep the Transportation Trust Fund whole as well. So the state legislature looked at some of the federal funds as well to backfill some of the dollars that they were looking to cut with their gas tax holiday to make sure that some of those other flow-down dollars coming to us were taken care of. So that was sort of the length and the extent of some of the work that we did in Tallahassee, because we wanted to make sure that we were whole, knowing that our funding sources are limited, probably much more than the state's, and didn't want to get pulled in to that broader conversation that they were having. I mean, we love when the state, you know, if the state wants to cut their taxes and send those down to, you know, folks, we appreciate that very much. You know, it's when they start looking at our bottom line and, you know, nipping and tucking there that it gets our administrators, you know, hair to raise and those phone calls to come to us to say, what are y'all doing to make sure that we're safeguarding some of these programs that we've committed to local governments? So those were the extent of just, you know, the brief conversations that we had on it.
Thank you, Mr. Bonlaren. And just to circle back to what Commissioner Sacks was talking about before, on June 2nd, we're going to have the Economic Summit, and certainly transportation will be on the agenda. And I think we are going to have to start talking about a dedicated funding source for transportation going forward. And I think that will create a lot of conversation at that, at that summit. Anybody else have any conversation about that remark, as far as Commissioner Bernard's suggestion? All right. Commissioner Bernard, did you have anything else that you would like to bring forward?
Well, I, I think we'd love to bring it back so that at least we can, let staff give us a full.
All right. Without objection, we'll ask for a workshop on that so that we can have fuller discussion. All right. We're going to move forward then with Commissioner Kerner.
Thank you, Mayor. My only comment is to ask the, the county administrator to give us a, an update and some clarity on an issue that was well-reported on by the Palm Beach Post by Mike Diamond regarding our custodial services contract. Today may not be the most appropriate day or time, but if in the near future we can have a public discussion about it, I just want to ensure that our RFPs are mirroring and amplifying the will of this board to ensure that those that work in some of the most difficult and thankless jobs in this county under taxpayer funds are compensated and paid appropriately. And I've been assured that that is the case here with, with the reporting and the concern. But if we can have a more in-depth dive at the next public meeting, I would greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
And certainly, each of us saw the article that was discussing the, the outsourced contract. And I know the county administrator and I have had lengthy conversations, and there's certainly a balance to be had, and we should have a discussion on that. I think we are all embracing living wage. We have talked about homelessness. We've talked about workforce, affordable housing. And we need to be setting an example as a commission to make sure that we're not employing people at a wage that's not going to allow them to enjoy the, the benefits of living here in Palm Beach County. So thank you very much for bringing that forward, Commissioner Kerner. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your comments. And, and I know that there's an active RFP out there, so I don't want to get into a situation where I'm favoring one company over the other. I really don't know anything about the companies. But I do want to say, while we have this issue before us, even briefly, that I deeply appreciate, and I'm always thankful for the men and women that work in our facilities and clean these, our offices, and the many structures and buildings that this county has in its footprint here, as you all are odd hours at night on the weekends, and there's always some sort of diligent activity going on in this building to ensure that we're safe and clean. So I hope those workers know, no matter who they work for and what capacity, that we're very thankful for those services that the custodial staff provides. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Commissioner Marino?
Yes, sir.
Did I do you already?
I said my thank yous and recognitions to Verdina.
It's been so long, I forgot.
No problem.
Vice Mayor?
All right, everybody get ready. I've got, on behalf of District 4, I would like to request the following off-site approvals. Certificate of Commendations for Robert Morgan, Mike Saviglia, Gregory Bettini, Bettany, and Ryan Warren, and also declaring May 12, 2022 is No Place for Hate Day, and declaring May 21st through 27th, 2022 is National Safe Boating Week.
And just as a frame of reference, so that you understand, the certificate of commendation are for the principals that were involved in the safe landing of a plane at PBIA, that we all were very excited to see a non-pilot being able to bring a plane down with the assistance of our very capable staff. assistance of our very capable staff. So, it's been moved by Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Marino. All in favor, all opposed? Thank you, Commissioner, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. On behalf of myself and District Two, I'd like to request the following off-site proclamations, declaring June 2022 as the 10th Annual Florida Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents Month in Palm Beach County, declaring June 2022 as the 10th Annual Hispanic Latino Studies Summer Institute Month in Palm Beach County, declaring June 2022 as Freedom to Read during LGBTQ Pride Month, and proclamation recognizing the 30th Anniversary of the West Palm Beach Seventh Day Baptist Church.
I have a motion by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Kerner. All in favor, all opposed? It's approved unanimously, six to zero.
Thank you, sir. I just want to report back to the board. I had the distinct privilege and honor of representing the Board of County Commissioners last Monday, attending a White House Rose Garden Ceremony where the President announced in conjunction with private partners, the rollout of a new broadband expansion program for low-cost broadband availability in, throughout the United States. As you know, the federal government has been offering a $30 per month subsidy for low-income families, and my understanding is 40 million families, or 40 million people in Palm, in the United States are covered underneath this program. There are the requirements, or they can, if they're earning 200% of the poverty level, if they qualify, folks qualify for Medicaid, if the family or children get free and reduced lunch at school, they will qualify for this program. But what's been missing has been from our private providers to provide such a program that it would accept the $30 payment, monthly payment, as a complete coverage to provide high-speed internet accessibility to our residents, and that program was announced. I'm happy to report that Comcast, AT&amp;T, Verizon, Breeze, and there were a total of 20 ISPs that have released their programs. Families now will be able to receive high-speed 100 megabits down, and I believe most of them are offering 10 to 20 megabits uploading, and they, that will be covered, including the equipment, the support, everything for that $30 a month fee. So, if somebody's qualifying for that, they will have zero out-of-pocket expenses, and this is a huge step in helping us bridge the digital divide, and I couldn't have been happier than to be there on behalf of our board to hear this announcement. Also, yesterday, I was attended the rollout of our mesh network that we're doing in conjunction with the school district, and the rollout of their Wi-Fi extender program at the Lantana Elementary School in Lantana. It's be, the program is rolling out throughout the county. When we complete the program, we expect 25,000 students to be covered through our free Wi-Fi mesh network in conjunction with the school district and the Education Foundation of Palm Beach County. So, the three organizations working together to, again, make sure that our students have access to reliable, high-speed internet so that they can continue their studies at home, give families access to all the benefits that the internet provides in this day and age for our society. So, with that, that's the conclusion of my remarks, sir, and thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Did you have anything for Commissioner McKinley?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Other than to wish her well, I know she's in Alaska, representing us with the National Association of Counties.
Well, I hope she doesn't get snow, snow, snowbrite, or frostbite, frostbite. Okay. All right. Commissioner Sacks, your light is on. Does that mean that's leftover? It's left.
Always got to say something, Mayor. I neglected to request approval for an off-site proclamation recognizing Cobra's 40th Anniversary.
I have a motion by Commissioner Sacks, seconded by the Vice Mayor. All in favor, all opposed? Show that is approved unanimously. Anything else?
No.
All right, good. All right, let me finish up. We're going to finish up by 11:30. I have the over-under at 11:30. First, I wanted to compliment the staff for putting together this year's Governor's Hurricane Conference. It was a very well-done program. Thank our alumnus, Bill Johnson, for steering that and making sure that a lot of very important information was disseminated to not only people throughout our state, but throughout the country, and I am happy to hear that we will be hosting that conference for the next four years, and hopefully, we will be able to impart our experience to people from throughout the country. June 1st is the beginning of hurricane season. If you believe those who forecast these kind of things, it's supposed to be another active season, they're saying it's actually going to be above average. So, please, it's time to prepare. If you don't have your hurricane kits prepared yet, please go on to the county website, and they will teach you what you need to put in those webs, in those kits so that you're prepared. You always need to be prepared for a few days without electricity, and that certainly is a possibility, given the activity in the Atlantic. I disseminated a, an email, or my office did, to let you know that I'd like to take a look at the Impact Fee Review Committee. Specifically, I've received a number of inquiries concerning the, the, eliminating the term limits imposed on committee members. As I understand it, this is the only committee where we actually have term limits, and we have a wealth of informa, or of knowledge that has been basically, you know, learned as these people have been in this position, and if we did not have term limits, we certainly, as a board, could make decisions to leave some of those people on longer than the, the number of three consecutive three-year terms. So, I'm going to ask with, if there, without objection, that we would have staff take a look at what it would take to revise that ordinance so that we could remove the term limits. Seeing no objection, we'll ask staff to review that. All right, one more minute. I could just, you know, I can just talk for a minute, or I can just say I'm pretty much done here. Thank you, everybody. I think we had a good meeting here, and we are adjourned.